I'm going to open our annual budget hearing for proposed fiscal year 25 budget. And the next thing is public comment. Do you have anybody that wants to speak on the budget? Okay. I'll close the hearing. And the next thing will be calling the regular meeting to order. Please join me in the pledge, Billy. Okay, are there any additions or corrections to the agenda this evening? There are none. Okay. With that, we need to adopt the agenda as presented this evening. Do I have a motion?
Yeah.
Is there a second? All those in favor of adopting the agenda as presented this evening, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? We have an agenda. So the next thing, it's not technically on the agenda this evening, but I would like to recognize our food services director, Ramona Moody, and I will turn it over to Marcy to give us more information.
First off, Ramona, would you like to come up? I, I don't have the plaque. It's hanging on Ramona's wall, but it's important to share. When Ramona went to the state food service or state school nutrition association meeting, she was selected by, by her peers in the, the state school nutrition department of education as the state food service director of the year. And the, the primary or a couple of the things that were shared were Ramona being a first year food service director. She has worked in department of agriculture, but not directly in school food service. She had an audit and it was a beautiful audit. It was what we went through with flying colors and they were very commanding of the work that she had done. And Ramona just continues to, to shine as far as the district is concerned in the offerings that we provide. Her willingness to cook hamburger buns and the, the hamburger patty maker that she received the donation for and, and those types of things. So I, I wanted it to be shared with all of you, her, her accomplishments. And I mean, as a first year food service director, I think that's very huge. So I'm congratulating.
Okay. Letter C, consider approval of mill levy taxes for the 24, 25 fiscal year. The recommendation is to approve the mill levies at one mill recreation levy, half a mill gosies levy, and 25 mill tax levy. Do I have a motion?
A what?
Is there a second? Sorry. Any discussion?
I have a question. I was just wondering how the school got involved in doing a recreational, handing out the money for all the recreational things rather than like the county commissioners or something like that.
Well, let Marcy speak to that. Cause I think she has a little bit more historical knowledge in relation to that levy.
Um, the, the rec bill is something that is available to all of the school districts in Wyoming. Should they choose to levy that, that mill? So if, if you go back and look at the bylaws, it's been, been happening for, for a very long time. I'm going to say into the early eighties that the intent of it in the state of Wyoming is simply for, for recreation. I, I don't know if it started with children and if it, if it grew into, you know, additional classes, but it, it's in state statute that districts have the opportunity to levy that. Carlos is, as a member of that, is there anything else you want to share or Dylan or?
I'm, I'm not that part of, if the question as far as you know, school and community is that there wasn't really a need to establish in the community that would actually, that would do that at that time. Like a rec, a community or a rec person and that kind of why.
Yeah, I was just wondering how, how we got there.
I'm on the grid. I mean, when we have that reported, I believe it's in, because that meeting takes place in April, is it? Each year, the rec board.
March.
And then it's, then we have that in the, is it shared then in the April meeting on those documents? A lot of our organizations that probably would not be able to actually function in our community without that, those, that revenue from the record. I know many of the summer programs and then also in particular, I believe it is the splash pad at Fort Laramie has been funded by a number of those things. So there's quite a wide variety of activities and functions that the rec board allows and utilizes throughout the community. So I know it's been well received as I've seen it being used around this community and other communities across the state.
One more thing, it's the school board and the finances of the record. There's only three members allowed, three school board members are allowed to be on the record, but that's how to be. Other community members.
We're, we're the financial pass through piece of it, and that's why you see it appear in our budgets. I do the reporting that the, the rep board signs off on.
Any other? All those in favor of approving the middle levy taxes for the 24, 25 fiscal year, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? Any comments? Letter D is considered adoption of the 24, 25 budget. The budget is included within our packets this evening, and the recommendation is to approve the 24, 25 budget as presented. Do I have a motion?
Aye.
Is there a second? Sorry. Any discussion?
I would, I would share a few, a few items with you all. Let me project it onto the screen. Why is my screen paused? Can you zoom in?
There it is, right on your right side.
Okay, okay. If you, um.
I think you can enlarge it if you want.
Can I?
Maybe not.
There we go. If you look at the budget, I'm starting on page four. A few of the items that I want to bring to your attention. Page five is just a summary. It's in there for, for your reference, but if you go into page six, there is some history in regards to cash carryover and revenues versus expenses and, and where I have us projected at. This budget year was, was very different than most. When we talked about the preliminary budget, I had anticipated and hoped that we would have seen the insurance proceeds. And because of the, the size of the claim, it went through reinsurers and stop loss and all sorts of stuff. And they tell me that we're close to receiving the money, but we don't have the money yet. Because of that, we have approximately 1.1 million dollars that when we talked through preliminary budget, that was going to be in last year fiscal year 23, 24. That revenue is, is moving into 24, 25. So what I did for you tonight, just to give you a, a little feel for, for where I see us ending fiscal year 25 at, I'm a 10.09% carryover and, and that's slightly less, but I'm going to be able to share with you why. Looking at the revenues, I'm projecting us to be at 34, 34.5 million. When we looked at the preliminary budget, we were going to be at 33.2 million. So there, there's a substantial increase there due to, due to the insurance claim. The projected is 32,117,000 and it was projected to be at 33,845,000. There, there again, that 1.1, 1.2 really affects things. If we just briefly talk about the expenses, that being down on page 18. And I'm happy to talk through any category to a finite level, but I wanted to, to share with you the, the big picture this evening. When you look at total expenses, when we talked through the preliminary budget, it was going to be 34,252,000. The total revenues are coming in at third, or total expenditures coming in at 34,551,082. However, that's only a difference, a negative difference of $42,000. The, the one item that is, was not on our preliminary budget and a few of us talked through it is the transfer that you see right immediately above the total other uses. That transfer of $350,000. When we talked through the preliminary budget, that was going to be 50,000. That's the transfer to food service. Ramona and I worked through with the state, something called CEP, community eligibility provision. And what community eligibility provision does is that feeds all of our students K through 12 at no cost, similar to what happened during COVID. The, um, the difference is that we in turn would not be collecting any free and reduced applications for any students. We would be hoping that our participation is, is going up because of additional families taking advantage of that. However, we, we have to budget the anticipation that there's going to be a cost for that. So the $50,000 is roughly what it costs us to feed or provide lunches during our Friday interventions in the, the school year we just ended. So that's the 50,000 that was in the preliminary budget. The 300,000 is there in order to sign up for community eligibility provision. That is tied to our direct certifications and those kids that are directly tied to a free status. That is those kids that are foster, Medicare free or SNAP, that being the kids whose parents receive food stamps. What happened during COVID and no one, no one really knows except for the, the higher ups, if you will. There, there was an extended eligibility to families for that Medicare free classification at the, at the end of COVID. And that, that eligibility is set to end here in the 24, 25 school year. By taking advantage of the CEP, we're able to use our same percentage of free direct certs for the next four years. So we're taking advantage of kids that are direct cert now, but in two years, they may not be. With the CEP, we commit to free lunches and breakfasts this year. But then if this time next year, we come back and say families didn't take advantage of it, our participation didn't go up, this doesn't make sense. We're not obligated for the next four years. However, we can take advantage of it for the next four years. But that, that is a real difference item that was not in the preliminary budget. Mr. Kramer, you want to speak to that any further?
Yes, I think we all knew during COVID that one of the biggest benefits for families was our free meals program. The use and how that alleviated a lot of concern for families in order to pay their lunch premiums. And we've known that a lot of time and energy in our community has been spent with donations to try to meet the needs of some of those outstanding balances that we got over the last two years. This is a way for us as a school district to really help a lot of our families that don't fall into that area that they automatically qualify for free lunches. But we know we have a significant population in our community that don't qualify for a lot of services because of their income level, but they need assistance in some way, shape or form. Because their current hourly rate isn't covering everything that family needs. And so if we can alleviate a cost to families and provide a nutritious meal, for families for breakfast and lunch, and what I see too at Torrance and high school and the high schools in general, where we have our lowest turnout for free of these lunch participation, because there's the aspect of the application process. And there's always this piece where we've just had lower numbers and, and across the nation at the high school level. I foresee an ability at parts of high school where we've had open campus, but we know the cost of eating off the campus where we have kids eating fast food and all those, where we have an option to go with grab and go bags. Where many of these students can still utilize the open campus facility, have a grab and go bag and not have to spend a significant amount of funds to be fed in some of our other areas that might not be as income aware, because a lot of times it's a, it's a community thing in which kids need to interact, but they have that option to have a meal. And we're able to do that in our budget. I think this is a fantastic program. I thought that was one of the biggest benefits that we had when, when we had and went into COVID that we felt made a big impact. And this allows us as a district to accomplish that same thing and really meet some families where they need much, because we, we have seen, I believe it was 25,000 unpaid and unpaid lunch this last, this last year. So it's affecting families. There were $25,000 were out there for families that they were unable to pay their bills this last year. And so I think it can be, it can be certainly well utilized within our community and not just by qualification standards, but by everyone, which I think is very significant.
Mr. Kramer, can you tell us? I know there's state statute that says if they have not paid for their meals, they do, is it that they don't get their diploma or how does that work?
It's a transcript piece that we, we are not able to provide transcripts when they're requested. If they're still unpaid lunch debt, we've been able to, to not have to implement that due to various reasons. Because we've got the nations and things and the ability when we have those requests. But it is possible. I mean, it is something certainly that is state statute. And then is, if there were not the funds available to pay for those unpaid lunches, certainly could inhibit kids from receiving records.
And has there been an increase in unpaid within the last year or two or not?
It remained pretty steady from the previous year and pre-COVID. And so we've seen that not as something has been a significant increase. But I also think part of that has been the ability for us to fundraise a lot of our fundraising to address that. And, and we've been working very diligently with families. And I think it also has in some ways affected our participation rate, because if there's unpaid lunch debt and they're getting notices, there is the chance that they're not participating because they don't want to increase that lunch debt as opposed to being able to be able to access those meals.
So I think that. So.
Um, I, I was just going to ask Ramona if she had anything additionally she wanted to add. Okay.
Um, so I guess on item E, I was going to wait until then and first people. That five dollar charge for seconds, is that, is that in the price of?
Um, that's a great question. What, what would happen is in the past, we had a student price, and that was what we charged for those kids that were fully paid. Because we received a slight reimbursement for paid students. Because with, with CEP, we just received reimbursement on the first meal and that first meal is totally free. So that's where seconds need to be priced at the same price as adults, which there's no reimbursement for, for seconds.
This year.
Our, our paid, we increased 10 cents. All, all of our, all of our meals were increased 10 cents.
I think his question is what, what was the student cost this year for a second?
Um, for, for an entire meal was 325?
That was your question, correct?
So, um, going back to the budget, the, the general fund budget is, is very much based upon the preliminary budget that was provided to you. There were a few positions added in that we spoke about that came in from, from Esser Funding. And then there are the, the increase in special ed positions. Thinking about the concept that any special education expense that we have this year in general fund will be received the following year. That if you have anything in particular you want me to talk through with general fund, I'm happy to. If the, if you have immediate questions about general fund, otherwise I'll move to special fund.
I still have one more question about this on the school lunches.
Okay.
Um, so this is for one year.
The, the cost or the commitment?
Well, both.
This, this is for this year. What the anticipated cost is the 300,000 that we're transferring from general fund to the lunch fund.
I'm just going to add one thing. That would be a maximum expenditure, because one of the pieces is if we do increase our participation rate, then that reduces that cost. So like right now, if we had the same number of students eating lunches.
Percentage, correct?
Okay.
Percentage of students eating lunches this year, then going into this next year with free lunches, had that same percentage, that would be the anticipated cost. But if we increase the percentage of participants and we have more kids eating school lunch because it's free, that cost is reduced. And so the higher participation rate we have, the, the less dollars we actually spend from the general fund to pay for this program.
You have, you have a number of, or has how many kids actually go per second? I mean, for saying, sorry. Uh, that's.
You, can you hear him, Ramona? Um, Carlos's question was if there was any sort of percentage or number of students that might choose to receive a second meal. I think my experience is that it depends upon the school and it depends upon the, the grade level. That, um, you know, your, your elementary students, of course, are not. And I, I think what I have seen is historically at some of the outlying schools, correct, Ramona, that we see more seconds at?
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't have a lot of seconds that we see at schools. And then we do have some schools that are more important, but a school has some, and there are some that's not. Um, I don't have, I think that maybe I don't have one.
Thank you. Um, yeah, no, I, I was just, again, I wasn't even talking, explaining the budget there was many particularly about it. So I saw this. So I, I guess if I'm understanding correctly, your hope is to be able to increase the number of participants in the program. Um, but then I guess as it depends on the secondary issue, you're raising the price of seconds in order to try to make some of that up.
Uh, essentially that $5 is real close to our break even point. And that's, that's why that, that cost is there. We have to show the state what we're charging adults and in turn the second cost as well. And, and the hope is that, you know, if participation were to, you know, go great guns, then, then we might not have the staffing. But our, our hope is based upon what we saw with COVID, participation went up, but staffing was able to accommodate the, the participation. So that portion of the expenditures are static.
Right. So what Marcy tried to do within the budget was try to estimate the highest level possible. And so this is a worst case scenario in regards to this line item, if we were to remain staying in on the participation rate. And then with the, the second meal, you know, one thing I was going to mention, it's really meal dependent too. You know, as you and I know, under there, there's some meals that are very popular and, and they're certainly excited about getting seconds. Some of those others that, you know, you, it's a little, a few there.
But the second meal, you're meaning seconds during that time, that meal, not breakfast plus lunch equals second.
Correct.
Exactly. Yeah. They literally take a second, yeah, second tray, second full meal after they had their first one.
It's, it's not, let's say we had, um, hamburgers and some, a fruit and sun chips or, or whatever made the reimbursable meal. If they wanted a second bag of sun chips, that's not seconds. A seconds is a whole additional tray of everything that was served. And they, they all have the opportunity for the health bar that, um, you know, they, they can have whatever they want off of the health bar.
I'm just going to say, my only concern is we're taking the responsibility off the parents and how dependent are they going to become on this? But it can't last forever. We're kind of postponing, we're just drawing out something that's going to end regardless.
You want to answer that?
I'll start. Um, I think that there's an unknown with that. And the, the unknown is similar to what we saw in COVID. And there, there's a, there's a hope and a desire that the makeup, if you will, of school lunches could change. We, we don't have that from department of ag. But there, there is a hope that after we get past these four years, that school lunches may look different than, than they did yesterday. So I think that's the, that's the unknown that we were dealing with.
And I think there, there is, what we know for sure, there's a commitment to four years. And so we know for the next four years, if we as a district want to participate, it it's going to be available. And honestly, that's more than I can say for any other federal program. Because we depend on Title One, Title Two, Title Four, all could be gone next year. And we would be responsible for figuring out how to fund that same thing. So I think we find ourselves unfortunately in that yearly. Irregardless of which program we choose to enter in, um which is a scary scenario in and where we are dependent. On those federal programs, and this would be something that yes, after four years, we need to be dependent. But it is my hope, as Marcy reflected on, that this just signifies a change when we have that ability to participate. That there is one of these things that just becomes, this is our norm, this is this is what we do. And this is what we're able to do for families and for kids, just like we have been able to do providing a a free and appropriate public education. Is that part of that becomes, we have a meal program for breakfast and lunch. Like many other schools around the nation are able to do that are already actually fully funded uh lunch and breakfast programs. So I think I think it's quite possible, but I can understand the the thought process. But unfortunately, I think it's very similar to our our other programs that we find ourselves into and state programs who have that matter effect also.
The only thing um that comes to my mind is. Every one of us to see what it's like on your grocery store account. And I talk to people every day that uh that families are hurting big time like that, just trying to make money. Groceries and food are one of the number one problems. And we can help some families, they're everybody here and have.
Well, I appreciate you bringing up one of them, and you know, it's not just the price of of the groceries, but. We have some families that don't have a transportation vehicle in different locations. And they have to come out of pocket to be sustainable here, and that's that's the economy of quality. And um yeah, I I think this is something that, you know, appreciate.
The the last piece that I would share in regards to this is that um this would be district wide. You know, Mr. Kramer and Ramona and I have had a lot of conversations about um our um percentage of direct certs. Are much higher in in some schools versus others. And um those board members that we spoke to and as as we had this conversation, this. This is not just, you know, singling out a couple of schools and giving them the the benefit. This this is district wide, and so I I think that's something that as a district, we should be commended for.
Is there other schools that are doing this?
Um Ramona attended a meeting and um I've talked to some business managers and. Um what what we both are hearing are places um singling out particular schools. And um doing um, you know, triads or or certain areas. That that have the the better percentage qualification because there's the additional revenue opportunities there. And um you know, we we have enough kids that um families have kids spread throughout multiple schools. And I I would have had a really hard time coming to you and explaining this to you if we were were singling out. Um e- even just to say, just Torrenton, I I don't know how you explain that to people that, you know, there's. Three other communities in our district that how how would how would we have just done one?
I I just wanted to first know. Or state.
State.
In the state. Participating in this or doing it or?
We're we're not hearing of anyone doing it district wide. We're we're kind of the. The pacemaker for that.
But there are a number that are looking at participating individual school wise across the state.
Yep, yep.
So anything else on the budget outside of this?
Um there is, I want to move into special fund, that's on um page nineteen in in your packet. And um the the big item in the special fund is the fact that the ESSR dollars are are going away. And um I I projected here the budget based upon on the ESSR dollars going away. However, it's important to notate, um we've been asked by the state to to reflect on. How or um to what degree, I guess, is a better um way to phrase it. Um to what degree we will have expended our ESSR allocation. And um right now, we have the potential, Mr. Kramer's gonna share with you, we have about two million dollars that looks to be unspent. That um we want to talk a little bit about that.
So one of the challenges that we've had um have been there. When we first started looking at ESSR funds, there was a pretty wide description on areas for expenditures. And each year progressively gets tightened. Uh other pieces that I talked to individual board members about um have been also districts have found themselves expending dollars. And what they viewed as an appropriate cost, and a year later, uh after an audit, were told. No, that was not an appropriate cost, your general fund has to cover it. Uh and and other districts locally have added that enough to a significant amount. That has kind of made us a little bit more hesitant as each year has progressed. Um unless we have a very, very direct link uh to the descriptions. Uh which we in Goshen County have not had any situations where we have had to pay general fund dollars for ESSR expenditures. Uh but there's a hesitancy with Marcy and I as we have those those discussions. Uh where we had very specific things in mind of what we wanted to utilize the ESSR funds for. Uh and have done that over the last uh four years. That looks to be then where we we potentially could have two million dollars unspent that we would send back. Uh to the state and federal in regards to those ESSR. Now, there are some options. Um if the board would want to take a look, and we can do that at any time between now. Uh and that date of November, is it has to be extended or is it October?
Um September.
September. So in between now, so we have two meetings in between now where we can look at some of those more expenditures. If there is interest by the board. Uh what that would only require us to do is when we come back in July of twenty twenty-five, we would amend the budget. Um but one of the pieces that probably we had, we had discussed early on. Um when utilizing ESSR funds was uh recruitment and retention. And so that is an area uh that if there is an interest at the board level, uh we can look at that and give some options to the board. If there's an interest to have less than the two million dollars uh expended. Um otherwise, we have been looking at anything that comes up, in particular around the specific outline of ESSR funds. We have been pushing those expenditures towards that amount, um but even with that, we're not looking at large ticket items during that. Because as I referenced a little bit earlier, there is a little bit of hesitation um on some of those larger items. Retention recruitment hasn't been one of those. Those have been one that have always been well received and haven't been questioned. Uh with my with the correct wording and the right uh looking at the information. But I wanted to just let you know about that and take a little bit of time uh to talk about that because like Marcy referenced. Uh we haven't asked by the state to just submit a questionnaire uh about the remaining funds that we have and how those will be utilized and what we'll be looking at sending back. And so over the next few weeks, um if there is an interest and there's an expression from the board uh to add an agenda item within uh August. Uh we would certainly be open to taking a look at that, uh but if the board had direction on that, um please let us know.
So additionally, in your budget, um there are a number of additional funds in here. The um major maintenance fund is the fund that um we receive money from the state. On a annual basis to take care of our buildings. That um is budgeted at two point four million, um both revenue and expenditures. Capital construction is the fund where we receive um money to fund school facility projects. The capital construction fund is where you will see the revenue come in and the expenditures go out for um the demo project. At the the tech ed building. If you haven't been by there, by the way, it's um. Looks very nice. Um the food service fund, we we've talked. A lot about that. If you want to talk more, I'm happy to, but um there, the food service fund um is a little bit confusing. Because the food service fund where the auditors come in, we have some non-cash entries that we have to make in the food service fund. That's the reason for the revenues exceeding the expenditures by a hundred thousand dollars. Commodities and depreciation. Student activities, that's page twenty-three of your um. Um packet, student activities, that's um money raised by the kids that they turn around and expend on student projects. So um that is an agency fund where we simply hold hold the money in trust. The um rec board, we we spoke about that in the mill levy. The um levy are based on our assessed values going up. The rec mill looks to bring in three hundred thousand next year, and then we would in turn. Um be able to expend approximately five hundred and sixteen thousand based upon carryover. Um held in that fund if there be projects. Um that's the reason why there there's carryovers, there's been some years that projects haven't been been spent. And then um tonight, we haven't talked about BOCs, but I think Dylan, are um you participate in the Northeast Wyoming BOCs? Oh, okay, perfect. This this is the the budget for for the EWC BOCs. This is um funding our dual and concurrent enrollment for higher education. So and this is where our high school students are receiving college credits. For um those classes and they're appearing on both um EWC transcripts as well as um high school transcripts. So that um concludes the budget. I would be happy to field any questions.
Just about the um. You said by August meeting, you'd like to.
That would give us time. If if we, if there's a request where you can, where board members would say, yeah, we'd like to talk more about that, have a proposal. We can then talk in detail about that and it also can be, it can be finalized at 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 latest in September one if needed then, correct? Or is that like?
I think that's too late.
And we could be, so one of the things too, we have options as long as it's before September. So there might be any more. If we have discussion in the August one special meeting, it is always an option to approve. A proposal or however we need to. And we can have further discussion on that. Whatever whatever we feel we're we're comfortable with, um I Marcy and I are comfortable in the in any direction. I don't have hesitation in sending those dollars back if we can't spend them in a way that is is appropriate. And provides a need for Goshen County, but also if we identify it, it would be appropriate to extend those dollars.
Any other discussion on the twenty-four, twenty-five? All those in favor of adopting the twenty-four, twenty-five budget, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Any extensions? Item carries. Letter E, consider approval of district meal prices for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Your recommendation is to approve maintaining adult and dollar card meal prices for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year as presented. Do I have a motion? Is there a second? Any discussion?
I I just feel that we already have a federal program in place. For everybody to apply. That can tell early lunches and everything like that, and if they don't apply for it, that is on the parents. They have a responsibility to take care of their children as well. And taking the responsibility of making children away from the parents and be responsible for their children. Is not doing any favors for anyone, and eventually they have to have to step up. So. It's just, I think we're just pushing something out and trying to make people more dependent on the school district. I don't think that's what we really are here, because it's still taxpayer knowledge. The money that we're gonna spend is taxpayer knowledge. I just have a hard time not keeping the parents responsible for the children. I think we're letting them off the hook.
All those in favor of approving the district meal prices for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
Any extensions? So, oh, we only have quarter of what Selena's.
Yep, we can. Lena, are you, do you?
I voted save, I voted in favor.
So item carries. So letter F. Consider approval of student tuition for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Previous tuition rates were uh twenty-three, twenty-four was twenty thousand two hundred and seventy-one dollars. Twenty-two, twenty-three was eighteen thousand six hundred and forty-nine dollars. And twenty-one, twenty-two was eighteen thousand eight hundred and seven dollars. The recommendation is to approve the student tuition rates for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year in the amount of twenty thousand three hundred and seventy-one dollars. Do I have a motion? Is there a second? Any discussion?
I I do have a question. Um just. That I mean, that's a few things, right? Um but I guess, what is, what does that look like? Is it because we have employees coming over from like Nebraska and their children are one year in?
Well, first, first off, it's it's a hundred dollar difference from twenty-three, twenty-four to twenty-four, twenty-five. The and and what it is, it's it's a simple calculation based upon total expenditures. Divided by um student ADM for that year. This um. Tuition rate would be used if we had someone who was had residents in Nebraska. Choosing to retain their residents in Nebraska and wanted their their students to be educated in Goshen County School District. If they had a residency in Goshen County, then they wouldn't be assessed this this charge. What what I see happening, Carlos, is that um our expenditures have continued to go up a little bit. And um our ADM has has gone down a little bit. So um the fact that our, you know, bottom number, that denominator. Is is go- going slightly down, that's raising that tuition rate. But in in fifteen years, I I've not seen anyone pay that. State state statute requires us to to have it ready, should someone um, you know, wish to to pay it. But I I've not had anyone pay it.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of approving uh student tuition for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. In the amount of twenty thousand three hundred and seventy-one dollars, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Any extensions? I think there is. Letter G, consider approval of offering certified employment contracts.
We do not have any contracts that were. We do not have any contracts that were updated. We did not offer, it's been the last meeting that was.
Letter H, consider approval of Torrenton Middle School twenty-four, twenty-five student handbook. The recommendation is to approve the P M S student handbook is presented. Um, as emailed to the board members on July eleventh. Do I have a motion?
No.
Is there a second?
Certainly.
Any discussion? All those in favor of approving Torrenton Middle School twenty-four, twenty-five student handbook, please signify by saying aye.
All right.
All of the both. Any extension? I need carries. And with that, we're here.
Okay, everybody.